To discuss our Housing Element 2023-2031. A very exciting evening it is tonight. Before we take roll call, I would like to ask each of the Planning Commissioners, starting on my right from the end, to introduce themselves.
My name is Steve Reddick on the Planning Commission.
I'm Margaret Gossett. I'm a Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
I'm Rick Hernandez. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission.
David Gorn, Planning Commissioner.
Hazel Joannis, Planning Commissioner.
Welcome. That's very exciting. It's so nice to have everybody together. It's really a treat. We don't do this except maybe once or twice a year. We should do it more often. I would like to ask for roll call, please.
Commissioner Reddick?
I'm here.
Commissioner Joannis?
Here.
Commissioner Gorn?
I'm here.
Vice Chair Gossett?
Here.
Chair Hernandez?
I am present.
Commissioner or Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Councilmember Rorback?
Here.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Here.
Mayor Penrose?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Okay, we will start with our work session. This is the first public draft Housing Element. And staff has recommended that we have a joint work session with the Planning Commission on this first public draft to consider community and Planning Commission input. So I'll turn this over to Jill Acus, our Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, Planning Commission. It's so nice to be here in person with all of you and the community to crack open this public draft of our Housing Element. Hopefully, you've been able to find it online or a copy at the library or at City Hall. And staff is happy to provide you with some guidance as you go through it. We're working on our video right now. And I don't know what... I can go ahead and start without our slides. So we're obviously... Are you getting it? That's my screensaver. It's my... That is a ferryboat on the Puget Sound, my motherland. It's my screensaver. Okay. Show me. I can't see it. That one? All right. All right. Sorry about that. We can continue. So tonight, we look forward to receiving Council's direction after the public comment and discussion with the Planning Commission. This is a serious topic, and we have a pretty serious presentation. We clearly cannot cover the full scope of the element in depth in about 20 slides. We held this reception tonight to hopefully make some connections and help folks navigate through this policy matter. Mike Noche, our Housing Coordinator, and I will be trading off throughout this presentation. And we can field questions as we go, but we suggest holding them so that we can move through this quickly and get to the public forum. And with that, I will turn it over to Mike.
All right. Thank you, Jill. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Planning Commissioners. Mike Noche, Housing Coordinator for the city. Happy to be here this evening. So in tonight's presentation, our agenda for this evening is to review the... Do an overview of the Housing Element. We'll speak about aspects of the Housing Element and how we're combining the elements of the Local Coastal Land Use Plan, as well as our Sites Inventory, Goals, Policies, and Programs, and then how our RENA, which is our Regional Housing Needs Allocation, and how that jives with the city's Measure D, which is the growth measure that was passed by a voter initiative. And then we'll also review some next steps. So as just a quick overview, Cycle Six, which will be referenced multiple times. So there are multiple cycles of the Housing Element, starting in the late '60s is when the state of California required all cities and jurisdictions throughout the state to pass a Housing Element, which essentially outlined a plan to adequately house the community. So more specifically, what's included in the Housing Element. There is an introduction, an executive summary. As you can see, the Housing Plan really gets into those goals and policies, which we will touch on. There are also multiple technical reports. The affirmatively furthering fair housing is a new requirement that adds another lens to housing production in the city, as well as a community engagement component, which the staff started on well over a year ago, as well as a glossary of terms. So the goals and policies, as well as the programs, provide a foundation for the implementation of the Housing Element. The... Excuse me, sorry. HCD, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development, require the city to pass the Housing Element and also include measurable items that the city is going to work on during the Housing Element cycle. And what also is kind of a component to this, so the previous cycle, which would be Cycle Five, we are essentially building on the policies and goals from that previous cycle. So in Cycle Six, there will be some overlap, but also new program areas that we're required to include. The city is also required to report on our progress on all of these goals annually to the state, and that's part of our annual progress report to the state, which goes to the City Council every year. It's due by April 1st. Thank you. So I will highlight in the Housing Element Housing Plan section, we're not going to go through every one of the goals in this presentation. There are a number of... There's six total sections, as you saw on the previous slide. A few that I will highlight. Program 2-4 is a mobile home park affordability, which potentially has the city looking at rent stabilization for modular homes. There's also a childcare component in Program 3-6. And Program 4-5 looks at potentially tenant relocation assistance ordinance that the city could pursue. And all of these would be at the purview and recommendations of City Council, and staff would bring those initiatives forward as directed during the Housing Element cycle. Yeah. So I will also highlight, before we go to the next slide. So the layout that is on this slide is pretty much the format that you'll see for all the goals and policies. These are specific program area. So you'll see a policy section to start the Housing Plan. And then there will be specific programs that are under those sections. There's also a specific objective that would be outlined, as well as a timeline. That could be a specific date. HCD has asked us to be as specific as possible. So for example, you'll see a lot of the program areas that will have essentially a timeline, say mid-2024, for a certain program to hopefully reach completion or fruition. All right. Got it. All right. So the needs assessment is one component of the Housing Element. So this aspect overall looks at the population, employment, proximity as far as housing stock to certain areas of town, specific housing needs. Some notable aspects of this year's report is that despite two decades of development, so the city's population has not necessarily grown. It's pretty much remained stagnant. We reached, I believe, a pinnacle, and this is in this section of the Housing Element, at around 12,600 for population, and I believe 2,005. And it has slightly decreased. I think we're around 12,400, which was reported in the Housing Element this most recently. I think that was the 2020 census. And most of this data is related to census data. Another component that I wanted to highlight for Council and Planning Commission and the public this evening, you'll hear the term severely cost burdened used quite regularly. The severely cost burden is typically someone who's spending more than 50% of their income toward their housing costs. In Half Moon Bay, 15.6% of households spend over 50% of their income toward their housing costs. 16, little over 16, spend 30 to 50%. So for most affordable housing development, the rents or purchase price of an affordable home would be generally around 30% is the target, no more than 30% of someone's income. Another thing to note, where Half Moon Bay is much higher than other cities throughout the county, is that we have a higher percentage of non-English speakers. So this is folks who either speak minimal English or no English at all, fell into this category for the ages of five and up. So we're at 11.2% in Half Moon Bay, whereas the county as a whole, as you can see, is 7.4.
All right. This is our first switch. Moving on to the Constraints Report. This report is really the heart of a shift in our Housing Element from Cycle Five to Cycle Six. The Local Coastal Land Use Plan really reset the stage for what we can look forward to doing with this Housing Element. It removes numerous constraints that were really the focus of Cycle Five. Instead of writing about constraints, I had the pleasure of writing about harmony with the coastal plan and with enabling sites and other areas that are really going to roll it out a lot better than we had before. This Constraints Section also acknowledges the realities of infrastructure limitations, including water supply, which is one of the most important ones for us, and our environmental requirements, historic resources as well, as well as our local efforts to remove the constraints. And by constraints, we're talking about constraints that make it difficult to develop housing, especially affordable housing. The next technical report is the Housing Resources Section. And resources include our Sites Inventory, which is put together for meeting the regional housing needs allocation. My already noted that RENA is our reference to that. If you hear us say RENA, this is what we're talking about. This number of units, 480, was assigned to the city. All local jurisdictions receive a RENA allocation. And 480 units is twice the Cycle Five RENA. Of these 480 units, they are heavily weighted towards lower-income housing needs because the city has those deep needs for lower-income households. Most cities in Seminole County received at least double the RENA that they had in Cycle Five. In some cases, it was three to four times more. Half Moon Bay's increase was actually surprisingly relatively modest compared to what we saw in some of the other jurisdictions. So the idea of a Sites Inventory is that we need to demonstrate to HCD, and we also want to provide the housing that is needed for our community. And to do so, we demonstrate this with having available sites, sites that have zoning or are appropriate for development, that are going to accomplish the number of units that are specified. There are three categories of sites that are outlined. Pipeline projects are those that already have some level of an application in the hopper, and we have quite a few of those going. A lot of them are just single-family homes, accessory dwelling units. We have a subdivision underway right now. We also had a preliminary application for the Podesta Plan Development Area, so that was a large pipeline project. We're allowed to count accessory dwelling units towards RENA in this cycle. And it is based on a three-year average of production, recent production. And for Half Moon Bay, that's spent about 14 a year, and then we get to count them over an eight-year period. So we're going to count 112, and we're allowed to distribute them over various income levels. That's important for us because we're doing a lot of accessory dwelling units and consuming a lot of our Measure D capacity with them, and so being able to count them is very important. And then there are 12 Housing Opportunity Sites. And those sites were, in our reception, we wanted to make sure people were aware of them. They are all shown on the boards in the back of the room. And each one in the Housing Element has a map and summary table about zoning, realistic build-out. We had an analysis done by our... One of our consultants that is covering the HCD's requirements for how many units we can assume relative to base densities on each site. We try to show our math everywhere we go, and that math is in each of those tables, and it's described in this section. So it's a pretty tedious section, and we hope that you've had a chance to get through it. If you have any questions about it, please let us know. The rest of this section focuses on financial and other housing resources, which are also very important. But we are expecting a lot of interest, of course, in the housing sites, so emphasizing that a little bit tonight in terms of this presentation. This is how the RENA is looking. The 480 units is shown on this top line, distributed amongst four different income categories. And the light blue line below it is a sum-up of pipeline accessory dwelling units and opportunity site units, assigned to affordability levels based on application characteristics and other criteria. You will notice down here, this surplus unit category. We are required to show that we have more sites than necessary to meet RENA. And our understanding is that HCD is requiring at least a 20% buffer, and that when they are reviewing Housing Elements, they are often eliminating sites and/or reducing anticipated build-out. And so the recommendation has been to make sure you have a very generous buffer at the very lowest income levels. And so that is... That was our focus. The rest of it really just rolled up, and it wasn't something that we attempted, for example, to get 146% for moderate. That just... That worked out because of how many of our sites are going to support multifamily units, and they tend to be in that income category. So of note, the opportunity sites, three are on public-owned properties, which is really special and important because we just don't have very many sites like that. This includes, well, 555 Kelly, I apologize, that's actually in our pipeline. 880 Stone Pine and the Cabrillo Unified School District office site at the Hatch Elementary School are both included as opportunity sites. We are not planning to go over all of the opportunity sites or pipeline projects. If any of them come up in your discussion, we can just put them up on the screen if you would like to see them. And now we'll go back to Mike.
Thank you. So the next section that we'll speak about is a new section to this cycle's Housing Element, which is affirmatively furthering fair housing. This is a state requirement that looks at the history of housing segregation in many different communities. So every community in the state has to look at their Housing Element under this new lens. The... You know, and I also want to kind of reiterate that Jill and I are providing an overview. The Housing Element itself is well over 400 pages, and this section of the affirmatively furthering fair housing goes into a lot of detail in that section. And I definitely recommend anyone who... In the public that hasn't read that section, to please do, being it is a new section to the Housing Element. The aspects of affirmatively furthering fair housing, excuse me, it is meant to have jurisdictions take meaningful actions in combating discrimination and overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities that are free of barriers, and provide opportunity to protected characteristics. This also focuses on key access to opportunity. So as we get into an overview of sites that you'll see in the Housing Element, many of those sites are near or in our downtown city center, close to resources, which then play into how the city is meeting its AFFH requirements. I think that covers that section. There's also some specific program areas as well that help the city in further affirming the fair housing. Apologies, I'm still getting used to the name, even though we've looked at it many times. The other aspects is that it overlaps with a lot of city initiatives regarding economic development, educational and employment opportunities throughout the city, as well as the potential coastside opportunity center that the city is working on. We have information about that initiative on our website as well for anyone who's interested. All right. So community engagement. The city did a very in-depth approach. We go into a lot of detail in this section of the Housing Element, as well as feedback from individuals and organizations that we spoke with throughout the community. There were many key takeaways. Some very common themes that staff heard about is an overall need for workforce housing. We heard a lot of comments about overcrowding, folks who are paying, who are cost burdened and paying a lot of rent, folks who were essentially being potentially subleasing and therefore potentially not in a typical lease agreement due to overcrowding, where they were renting a room but maybe weren't on the official lease. So they may have run into situations with unfair rent increases, where they weren't necessarily protected, being they weren't under the official lease of the property or with the landlord. Anyone that contacts the city, we definitely refer them to legal aid services, but it is a widespread issue due to overcrowding, is what we've been hearing. Thank you.
I think Mike covered most of this. I just want to add a nuance about the community engagement, the significance of it in Housing Element review at this point. This is a transparent process, and the Community Engagement Section includes copious notes from interviews that we had with service agencies and individuals, and then refine that into these takeaways, where we need to demonstrate a connection between that input and actionable programs that are going to support the needs that were identified. So you will see crosswalks in the Housing Element, including in this chapter, to demonstrate that there is a connection with the needs that we're hearing from our community members beyond census data, beyond that data crunching that is in that first section. And so we want folks to look at that. And the Planning Commission actually already reviewed a draft of that technical report, its Appendix E, and they looked at it last summer, but of course, we've added a few things to it since then. And the last technical background report is reporting out on how we did on Cycle Five. And it covers policy analysis, program implementation, whether or not it was successful, and some of the things that went well, and pinpointing things that didn't. And by going through that exercise, it helps further inform how to update the goals, the policies, and the programs, in that anything that was not effective, we really took a close look at. Some of them are complete, so then we can move on and do other things. We do want to note a few real great accomplishments. The city really braced up its housing program during Cycle Five. We now have adopted... City Council adopted Affordable Housing Funding Guidelines. Council adopted residential rental security measures, and Council approved a position for a full-time Housing Coordinator, which is, you know, absolutely critical for having all this work that needs to be done to implement a Housing Element and cover housing projects. We also worked through some very important policy, like the comprehensive update to the Local Coastal Land Use Plan, as well as some zoning improvements that were no cakewalks. We got through the mixed-use districts and parking standards ordinance that has enabled some projects that you see in the works, and updated the ADU ordinance twice, and we've got the STR ordinance wrapping up. Other areas have been really challenging, and I just... I want to note a little bit about why. Oops, excuse me. I accidentally skipped. With a couple examples. With a couple examples. The first one is, there was a program in the cycle five element to update the parking provisions for the R3 zoning district. That's a multifamily district. Well, that's great to maybe ease the parking requirements so that a site is more viable for housing development. But the city hardly has any land in the R3 zoning district. And there are hardly any developable sites in the R3 zoning district. So spending a lot of time working on parking provisions in the R3 zoning district would have, in my opinion, not accomplished very much. So we focused instead on the mixed-use districts. Whether or not you could say we fulfilled that program, you know, I don't know. Now, in the ordinance or the element going forward, we're going to have some rezonings of R2 to R3 that are specified in the local coastal land use plan. We will have more R3 areas. There are opportunity sites in those areas that are vacant, and it actually makes the program about looking at parking quite a bit more relevant for the cycle six element. I'd also like to, just the cycle five element, it really suffered for not having the local coastal land use plan update. But it also didn't connect some of the dots that we need to think about. For example, the cycle five RENA was 240 units. One of the sites for cycle five was a site for 60 units, representing 25% of that RENA. And it's located in a very high fire severity zone. And we're just glad it didn't develop. But we are really benefiting, I'll say it again, from having this base of the new local coastal land use plan. The other thing in this technical report reporting out about how we did with cycle five is a quantitative assessment. And there are a few programs that are presented in that section in terms of how many numbers of ADUs were produced, as well as small lots were developed. But I'm focusing here on the RENA production because it was a hard cycle for us. This top two lines are, the blue one is showing what the cycle five RENA was. The gray line below it is showing what we've reported over the eight-year period in those annual progress reports. Now, I do want to note, we did more than what it shows there. You did. This council supported the county's purchase of the coast house. And those 52 rooms could not be counted against RENA because they don't include kitchens. But if they could have been counted, what would that have meant? They would have attributed to very low production. We also were not able to distribute the ADUs across the full range of affordability levels. They were all shown as moderate because that was the best data we had at the time. If they had been distributed across the affordability levels based on current survey data that has been coming through our 21 elements group, we could have counted some in all of the different income categories. And so this is a theoretical assessment. We thought it was important to show it because it gives more context. But, you know, it's demonstrating that almost all 240 units were created. Now, great, it still wasn't enough of a fit. What we're here for is a match, matching the community's housing needs with housing projects. So I'm just, we have to demonstrate to HCD how we're going to meet RENA, and that's very important. But what's more important is what this council and planning commission do in working on these projects and enabling them for meeting the needs of the community as you know them, which is above and beyond what the housing element is trying to do. So just, in our opinion, that's more important than RENA. All right, so we're wrapping up here. We've already alluded throughout this presentation, not even alluded, we've directly noted that the new local coastal land use plan has enabled the cycle six housing element. In fact, it, in my opinion, has probably enabled two cycles of housing elements. It has a 2040 build out. And in working on that build out, I assumed that we'd have two housing elements that would need to be done up to 2040. It established the town center boundary where council and coastal commission have certified is the place to focus development, identified almost every upzoning or rezoning or tweak to the zoning that needs to be done for the housing element sites, created the workforce housing overlay designation with a range of applications, enabling housing on properties that had never allowed it before in places that make sense. And it cemented the policy for affordable housing water connections. We note three sites that the land use plan made work. The Podesta planned unit development, for example, is one where the phasing requirements and the mix of uses specified in the old LUP were just not realistic. And so that's been revised, and we have very active developer interest in the site. The city's property just behind us, over on Kelly, was enabled by that document. The school district properties were also enabled by the document. The only significant site that we didn't identify in the land use plan is ADD Stone Pine. And now we have new information about the property, and so we will need to address that. But it's very notable that your land use plan covered all of that. And I think Mike covered most of this, but I just, to help the reader who may have been familiar with the cycle five element, we just want to note that we switched goals one and two. And so if you're trying to get a crosswalk from old programs to new ones, you'll want to just be aware of that. We expanded goal five, all the programs under goal five. It used to just have one or two, and now it has five. This is because of the sustainability work that the city has done with the building electrification ordinance and other efforts to make sure that the housing element is consistent with how much things have changed since cycle five. And then we added goal six. It includes a lot of, several programs that were in cycle five, but it's all about implementing the housing plan. And it's, these are things that must be done that really don't have measurable objectives. And so we're trying to distinguish that for our own work as well as HCD's review, because they expect quantifiable objectives for every single program. And that's not realistic for implementation, which needs to be an ongoing effort. So this is a lot of wonky minutia, but we want you to know that we've thought about these things and tried to organize it in a way that is really accessible to everyone and frankly usable to us. And then the new programs, Mike noted several of these, and we're looking forward to hearing input about them. And, oh, yes, we can't have this meeting without taking a detour into the world of growth control measures in the coastal zone. There's only one slide on this, but we've been asked several questions about measure D and RENA and the relationship between the two, as well as how is this working in San Mateo County, because they have different structure around their growth control. So the ballot measure for the city is incorporated into the local coastal program, both in policy as well as in the zoning and subdivision ordinance. So it's bolstered in numerous ways. And because it was a ballot measure, the language is absolutely specific. The estimated capacity of measure D for the eight-year housing element is 582 units. That is enough capacity to cover RENA. It's not enough capacity to cover RENA with that buffer that we showed you, and we're very upfront about that in the writing. And that's okay. It doesn't have to cover the full buffer. The buffer's just setting the table for more sites to develop. We don't expect them to all develop. And then also of note, the local coastal land use plan build out assumed through 2040 at least 750 units and had a much higher build out through the maximum theoretical build out scenario. So the capacity does include the half percent bonus for the downtown area. I know that's been a topic that has come up from public comment in the past. So although there's capacity in terms of the total number of RENA, or excuse me, measure D allocations for RENA, some of the, measure D can still be constricting, especially for larger projects and for the need to phase them. So we just are sharing that. It's written about as constrained. It remains a constraint. And we're really eager to hear any input around that. Now, this contrasts to how the counties, the unincorporated county in the coastal zone, how their growth restriction works. Per local coastal program policy, the MIG host is limited to 40 units per year. Previously, before their 2013 update, all ADUs and affordable units, at least my understanding, is they were all exempt from their growth limitation. With the 2013 update, they had to start counting them, but they are allowed to use a, I think it's about a three-year average. And so it's almost like having a rolling over capacity, so they don't lose capacity if there's a year where they go under 40. But it's very specific, but it is definitely looser than what measure D does. And so I was asked to speak to that, and that's my understanding of it from speaking with the county's building and planning director. And here we are at next steps. Mike's going to take us out.
Thank you, Jill. All right, so our public comment period will close on May 16th at 5:00 PM. I do want to make it clear that anyone who wants to provide feedback to staff will still accept that feedback after the deadline. But for the state's requirements, the city is required to have a 30-day public comment period. That's followed by a 10-business-day review before we can formally submit our first draft to the state, which we are outlining as May 31st at the end of the month. So we will take those 10 business days to collect that input, which we've already been analyzing, that's been coming through. We'll be using feedback from this meeting today to inform that process and any edits before we submit our first draft to the state. HCD will then have a 90-day review period. We do expect redline edits and comments on our first draft. I could be wrong, but I don't know of a city that had their first draft passed upon first review. So that is a normal aspect of the housing element review process, is that it will not be certified on the first go-around. We can expect comments. Staff will respond and work with HCD staff on making those updates. We'll return to city council for that second draft before submitting it again for a second submittal to HCD and hopefully a final approval. During all of that, as you can see on the screen, the city is taking on a SEQA analysis for environmental, as well as potentially commencing on zoning amendments.
Nice to see I didn't finish a sentence there. We intend, we intend to have the second draft adopted and hopefully certified. Oops. Okay, I'll go ahead and cover this. So the meeting format is what we would expect. Our mayor is going to preside over clarifying questions we're happy to answer, hold a public comment forum, and then have time for discussion and deliberation with the planning commission. And then concluding the planning commission's recommendations, take it into council to deliberate and make a motion to direct staff in terms of what kind of revisions you want us to make to this draft document. We do want to throw this up there, and we'll put it up again later. We do have an email address for the housing element and a website for the housing element. And that concludes our...
Jill and Mike, thank you so much. I know it's been years in the making. The housing element would not have been possible without the LCP and the LC, the local coastal land use plan, LCUS, the other acronym. At any rate, you've been working really hard on this, and I think you deserve a vacation. Right now, what we're going to do is just go to quick, I should say quick, because we don't really want to get into discussions, but clarifying questions. And we'll start with the planning commission and ask if there are any clarifying questions. Yes?
I have a question about the residential density bonus. Would that help on any of the given projects achieve the RENA numbers with the buffer?
The short answer is yes, but we are assuming the density bonus for some of the sites already, and it has to be very well justified. HCD will not accept basic assumptions that a density bonus will be invoked. You have to show that there's a real cause to know that it will be. And so, for example, we're expecting it on the Hatch Elementary School site because we have that information from having worked with the district. Also, density bonus units are exempt from measure D. And I think that you and I had talked about that, and that might be where you're going. And so that is helpful.
Thank you. Yes?
During our March planning commission meeting, we looked at the measure Ds that were approved. There were 22 allocations outside of downtown. 16 of them were ADUs. If I look at the 582 units that are being proposed for RENA, what's in place to keep a similar proportion just being consumed by ADUs and not actually having single-family houses?
Is that a topic for discussion rather than a clarifying question?
I think it probably is. I think the only quick response staff can have is, you know, any privately owned properties, we can't really control what's going to come forward. And the market for ADUs continues to be strong, and so we would expect the trend to continue. So I hope that frames it. We really only have controls over the public lands.
Thank you.
Other questions? Joanne? Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Jill, a slight confusion in my mind on your slide that shows measure D and RENA. And if I read that correctly, it showed with buffer 782 units, but that's much more than 20% on top of the RENA number. 20% on top of the RENA number.
It is, and let me... We do want to clarify this, so we'll put this back up if I can figure out how to do it. So whether or not we can get the tables up, I'll go ahead and just try to answer conceptually. The buffer included all the pipeline projects that are already in the hopper, that already... Most of those already have Measure D allocations, not all of them. It included 112 ADUs based on our recent average annual production, and then it included 328 units on opportunity sites. And I think the pipeline projects are a little bit high from this because they include Podesta, and that one may change over time. But the total number of units is 782, which we understand is well over the Measure D capacity. We're not required to have all of the base and the buffer units be developed during the housing element. We're just required to have enough sites to meet RENA with a buffer because sometimes sites don't go anywhere. You might have an application that stalls, or a property owner changes their mind about what they want to do. So it's setting the table for more, and I hope that clarifies.
If I understand you, then 782 is not the RENA number plus 20%. It's us being even more conservative in our planning than that.
It is, and we think it's going to get... We think it'll be moderated through the HCD's review. That's what we're seeing from their jurisdictions.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Jill?
Jill, you mentioned that there's a possibility that HCD will remove some sites, and that's why a buffer... They like to see a buffer. What types of sites do they normally remove, or why would they remove a site that the city has decided to place in their element?
They may look at... They look at a lot of things, is our understanding. They may look at past production and solicit... Take an example of Pacific Ridge. Pacific Ridge had a very high buildout in the former land use plan of over 200 units, and it ended up after a long time and all kinds of legal efforts with under 70 units. So they may question some of our estimates for buildout based on past production. They, in another way, they may question affordability levels, and so maybe not the total number of units, but whether or not the site is really going to be supportive for the lower-income categories, especially privately-owned sites. They are especially favorable to sites in a certain acreage range, and we hardly have any in that size. They like sites that are between, I think it's a half an acre and five acres. Most of our sites are smaller than that or larger than that. We do have a few that are in that sweet spot. I think a lot of their perspective about that is based on more urban areas and where infill dense housing works best, and that's not our context.
Are there other clarifying questions? None? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to public comment. Our first speaker is Joy from Harmony Salon.
I'm actually just kind of jumping into this whole development that's gonna be going on Stone Pine at the end, and my question is, is Stone Pine Road gonna be the only way in and out of where that development is currently being proposed? The reason why I ask this question is because I am three doors down from Stone Pine, and I'm already impacted severely by traffic. I'm not sure if the city has noticed on the weekends how the traffic is completely backed up all the way down Main Street, not allowing me to get into my business nor my clients, which is concerning to me for people who live at Cypress Cove if there's such an emergency. So just wanted to know if that was going... If you were considering another entrance or exit into that site. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rabbi Moshe Hein.
Thank you. I just want to say how I'm just amazed at how detailed and time-consuming this process is. I just want to lend my support to all of you who are doing this work because it's not easy. And there's a problem that we need to solve, and I think working together to make it happen is what I'm seeing here right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. Next is Rosio Avila.
Buenas noches, miembros del Consilio, Comisión de Planeamiento, y personas que se encuentran presentes.
Good evening, members of the council, members of the commission of the development, and people that are here present.
Mi nombre es Rosio Avila. Soy residente de aquí y soy miembro del comité de viviendas adsequibles.
My name is Rosio Avila, and I'm a resident of here, and I am a member of the committee of fair housing.
Hace más de once meses, casi un año, que he estado esperando para asistir a esta junta de la comisión de planeamiento de la ciudad. Okay. Tengo entendido que son los que deciden cuánto se debe construir a presentar... Cuando se debe construir o presentar un plan que sea aprobado sobre vivienda. También tengo entendido que cada ciertos años tienen que brindar viviendas para la comunidad. Y en más de los doce años que he estado aquí, no he mirado esas viviendas. Pero claro que se han construido viviendas, pero solo viviendas para personas que tienen el dinero para construir, personas que pueden pagar. Se han construido hoteles y hay otros por ahí en planes de construcción. ¿Qué ha pasado con la vivienda para personas de bajos ingresos? U otras personas que no tenemos el dinero para poder comprar. En nuestro caso, eso sería imposible porque no nos alcanzaría ni para pagar un apartamento de tres mil a tres mil ochocientos dólares por las altas rentas. Así que les pido que consideren la construcción de más viviendas, viviendas adsequibles que podamos pagar, y así brindarles un hogar seguro y digno a nuestros hijos, a nuestras familias, especialmente a nuestros hijos que son los que más sufren de vivir en estas circunstancias. Vivir en un solo cuarto. Hace muchos años se han pedido viviendas y nunca se han escuchado. Creo que es ahora y el tiempo de que nos escuchen, el tiempo de construir viviendas justas a las personas de esta comunidad. Ya que somos la mano de obra de este lugar, lo que hacemos es trabajo duro. El hecho de que seamos emigrantes no les da el derecho de negarnos una vivienda porque a fin de cuentas los abuelos de ustedes, los bisabuelos y tatarabuelos también un día vinieron como nosotros emigrando a este país. También nosotros queremos un futuro mejor para nuestros hijos, así como sus antepasados les dieron oportunidades a ustedes de tener una vida mejor. Gracias.
So I'm gonna do a side translation, being that there's some notes here, and so I'll be able to exactly interpret exactly what she said. Thank you for your patience. So once again, good evening, members of the council and of the commission, planning commission, and people here that are present. My name is Rosio Avila. I'm a resident and a member, committed member of accessible... Low-income housing. So it's been over 11 months, almost a year, and we've been waiting to go to a meeting of the planning commission here in the city. And so as far as I understand it, they're the ones who decide how things are built or constructed so that they can present a plan that can be approved in regards to housing. I also understand that there's a certain amount of years... Oh, every so often, years, you guys have to, like, provide a certain amount of housing in the community. And it's been more than 12 years that I've been here, and I haven't seen any housing at all. But of course, but of course, there's been houses that have been built here, but only houses for people that have the means or money to build, people that can pay for it. So there's been hotels that have been built and other types of plans for construction as well. So what has happened with the housing for people of low income or other people that, you know, don't have the money or the means to be able to purchase a home? In our case, that would be almost impossible because we don't have enough money to pay for even an apartment, you know, $3,000 or $3,800 because of the high rent. So I guess I'm asking that you consider the construction for more housing, low-income housing. That way we can pay and give a home, a safe home and a dignified home to our families, especially our kids that are the ones that are most impacted by these circumstances. So, you know, in comparison to just living in one room with them. So many years ago, we've been asking for housing, and you guys have never really listened to us. So I think now is the time that you listen to us. Now is the time to construct more just housing to the people in this community. So because we are the labor force in this community, and we do all of the hard, heavy lifting, the hard work and heavy lifting, the fact that we're immigrants doesn't really give you guys the rights to, like, not give us any just housing. Because after all, you know, bottom line is your grandfathers or your ancestors or your great-grandfathers or your great-great-grandfathers also one day came here just like us and immigrated to this country. Also, we want a future, a better future for our kids, just like you guys were given a better future by your relatives at one point, to have a better life. Thank you. We really need just housing for all.
Gracias, Rosio. Next, we have Carolina Carvajal.
Gracias por su atención.
Good evening to everybody. Thank you for your attention.
El día de ahora les hice una día positiva también.
So today I have a slide for you all.
Sé que no es tan bonita, pero tiene cosas muy importantes.
I know it's not as nice as that, but it's got some really important stuff.
En este momento les voy a hablar sobre cómo es sobrevivir para una persona en Half Moon Bay.
So I'm gonna talk to you guys about what it's like to survive, like, as a person here in Half Moon Bay.
Ganando el mínimo, 1645.
Earning minimum wage, which is 1645.
Hablamos de que trabajamos un promedio de ocho horas diarios, aunque muchos de nosotros trabajamos más.
So we're talking if we have an average of an eight-hour workday, but most of us work a lot longer than that.
Por cinco días, cuatro semanas, un año.
So five days a week, four weeks a month for the entire year.
Aunque muchos de nosotros tenemos dos trabajos, trabajamos los siete días, todos los días del año.
So we work every day. Most of us have two jobs, and we work, you know, seven days a week.
Si vemos un promedio de 131 dólares diarios.
So we're looking at an average of $131 a day.
658 al mes.
$658 a month.
Ala semana, sorry.
Sorry, weekly.
Al mes, 2632.
So it's $2,632 a month.
Cuando nosotros pagamos una renta por un cuarto, no por el apartamento completo.
So when we're paying for rent for a room, not for the entire apartment.
De 1,400.
It's $1,400.
Pagamos teléfono.
So we have to pay for the phone.
Pagamos nuestro seguro de carro.
We have to pay for car insurance.
Pagamos también nuestra gasolina, comida.
Gas, food.
Después de todo esto...
So after all of this.
Nosotros venimos pagando al mes 3,250.
We pay $3,250 on a monthly basis.
Cuando nuestro salario al mes es de 2,632.
When our monthly income is 2,632.
Estamos en números rojos.
So we're in the red.
Debemos mil dólares.
We owe a thousand bucks.
¿Qué hacemos?
So what are we gonna do?
Es triste porque la mayoría de personas vive así. Por eso tiene que compartir cuartos.
This is sad because the majority of the people are living like this, and this is why they have to share a room.
Déjenme decir que el 40% de la juventud de California se está mudando porque no puede pagar una vivación.
Let me just say that 40% of all of the young people are actually moving out of California because they can't afford it.
El día de ayer podemos escuchar palabras como que pueden bajar su interés, su casa puede perder su valor.
Yesterday, we heard comments, for example, that some people were saying that their house might drop, you know, in value.
Déjenme decir que invertir en una vivienda es la mayor inversión que usted puede hacer. Jamás pierde.
Let me just say that investing in a home is one of the largest investments you can make. You'll never lose out on that.
Si nosotros pudiéramos comprar una vivienda, lo haríamos.
If we could buy a home, we would do it.
Si nosotros tuviéramos el salario justo por nuestro trabajo tan fuerte...
So if we had a just salary for the jobs, the heavy jobs that we do...
Si nos pagaran en base a nuestro esfuerzo...
So if we were to get paid based on our effort...
Pudiéramos tener una casa también.
We'd also have a home.
Anhelamos tener una casa.
We desire to have a home.
Este día estamos aquí unidos pidiendo por viviendas, por más viviendas, mil viviendas.
We're here today, united, asking for a thousand more units.
Déjenos decir, si muchos de ustedes el día de ayer se preguntaran, ¿y por qué no se van?
So if many of you yesterday were... Así que si muchos de ustedes ayer se preguntaron, ¿por qué no se van?
No nos vamos porque este pueblo también muchos de nosotros lo han construido.
No vamos a ir porque muchos de nosotros aquí han ayudado a construir esta ciudad.
No queremos poner a nuestra juventud en riesgo.
No queremos poner a nuestra juventud en riesgo.
Ustedes saben que donde la renta es más barata, hay más violencia.
Ustedes saben que donde haya una renta más baja, la violencia aumenta.
No podemos exponer a nuestro futuro a volverse parte de esa violencia.
Así que no podemos dejar que nuestra juventud sea parte de tal violencia.
Si nosotros queremos que nuestros jóvenes crezcan y sean buenos líderes.
Así que si queremos que nuestros hijos crezcan y sean buenos líderes.
Debemos de comenzar a darles un buen lugar donde vivir.
Deberíamos empezar dandoles un buen lugar donde vivir.
Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias, Carolina. Ahora tenemos a Crystal Hernandez Avila.
Buenas noches, miembros del Consejo y de la Comisión de Planificación. Mi nombre es Crystal Hernandez Avila, tengo diez años y vivo en Half Moon Bay. Hay variaciones de necesidades aquí en Half Moon Bay. Pero una de, pero una, en mi opinión, que es una de las necesidades que tiene prioridad es la vivienda affordable para personas de baja renta. La razón por la que estoy aquí hablando y representando a mis hijos de mi comunidad y mi familia es porque estamos buscando un lugar decente que podemos llamar casa. Vivir en una habitación con nuestros padres y hermanos es realmente difícil para mí y para muchos de mis hijos que están viviendo mi experiencia. Algunos ejemplos de mi vida aquí son dormir en una cama con almohadas en un espacio de tres pies largo y seis pies largo, y es de seis pies largo. Y también algo realmente doloroso a experimentar es no tener mi propio espacio o habitación para concentrarse en la escuela. Esto nos afecta en nuestros calificaciones y en nuestra vida también. Porque es triste que miramos a nuestros padres sin tener ni dinero para alquilar un apartamento porque la renta es demasiado alta. Esta es una de las razones por las que voy a la marcha cada mes para que la gente, y especialmente el Consejo de la Ciudad, pueda escuchar nuestras voces siendo levantadas por nuestras necesidades. Para adultos y especialmente niños, porque somos los que van a ser afectados ahora mismo y en nuestro futuro, por eso. Estoy aquí pidiendo vivienda affordable aquí en Half Moon Bay. Gracias por escucharme, pero hay una cosa más que quiero decir. Estamos aquí y no estamos saliendo porque aquí es donde quiero vivir. Gracias.
Gracias, Crystal, muy bien hecho. Ahora está el pastor Sue Holland.
Buenas noches, soy el pastor Sue Holland. Soy pastor local, soy residente de Half Moon Bay y también soy miembro de Faith in Action Coastside. Mi tradición de fe enseña que todos los seres humanos están destinados con valía innata y dignidad y que todos nos llamamos a cuidar unos de los demás. Tener una vivienda decente y estable es vital y es necesario para que las familias de nuestras comunidades prosperen y nuestros hijos florezcan, como ustedes acaba de escuchar de Crystal, para poder enfocarse en su trabajo escolar, para tener espacio y libertad para poder jugar, para ser simplemente niños. La casa es sagrada. Esto es cierto para todas nuestras familias, incluyendo el 31% de la gente que gasta más de 30% de su ingreso en el refugio. Nosotros como ciudadanos, tenemos que decidir qué tipo de comunidad queremos ser. ¿Queremos ser el tipo que permite a todos nuestros miembros de la comunidad florecer, incluyendo a nuestros trabajadores de servicio, nuestros trabajadores de hospitalidad, nuestros maestros, nuestros trabajadores de la granja, todas las personas que son contribuyentes vitales a nuestra comunidad? ¿Queremos ser el lugar que hace que Half Moon Bay sea una gran comunidad para ser? ¿O vamos a cambiar nuestras cabezas a nuestros vecinos? Tenemos que decidir como comunidad si vamos a usar nuestras energías y toda nuestra creatividad para resolver nuestro problema de vivienda, que no va a desaparecer, o si vamos a desperdiciar nuestras energías y nuestros recursos en construir progresos. Las cien ochenta y cinco unidades requeridas por la RENA para vivienda de bajo y affordable ingreso, es un comienzo, pero es realmente solo un descenso en el bucket de nuestra necesidad de vivienda. Así que quiero animar a nuestra comunidad y a nuestra dirección a apoyar la vivienda para todos los niveles de ingreso para que Half Moon Bay sea un lugar maravilloso para vivir para todas las personas que la llaman casa. Gracias.
Gracias, Sue. Ahora tenemos a Jan Hansen.
Hola, soy Jan Hansen, residente de Half Moon Bay y una orgullosa dueña de una casa manufacturada en Canata Cove. Después de treinta años de practicar derecho en San Francisco, cuando me mudé hace siete años cuando retiré, solo podía pagar para vivir en Half Moon Bay si compraba una casa manufacturada, lo cual costó el 20% del costo de lo que las casas literalmente a través de la calle costan. En realidad, me cambié a un tamaño de 1500 metros cuadrados, tres habitaciones, dos baños, y no podía estar más feliz. Entiendo que Canata Cove es un tipo muy diferente de parque que lo que ustedes están considerando ahora, pero hay algunas similitudes. En mi parque, y creo que sería cierto en otros parques, hay un real sentido de comunidad y hay un real sentido de orgullo en la propiedad. Y si no eres lo suficientemente orgulloso, el manejo, que es gobernado por el estatuto estatal, el Código Civil de California tiene una sección completa sobre casas manufacturadas, muy estrictamente moderada, es muy favorable a los dueños. No puedes ir demasiado mal con eso. Y me encantaría ver algunas de estas familias en una casa como esta. En términos de valores de propiedad, sé que en Canata Cove los precios han aumentado de 50 a 60% en los últimos años. Los impuestos de propiedad son extremadamente bajos porque las casas son consideradas propiedad personal, no propiedad real, así que estamos impuestos como nuestras visas o algo así. Y hay límites en los incrementos anuales de la renta de espacio, que son noticeable. Pero en general, he dicho, tan pronto como me mudé aquí, creo que la ciudad debería considerar más casas manufacturadas y estoy contenta de ver que lo están haciendo ahora. Así que muchas gracias.
Gracias, Jan. Ahora tenemos a Alice Linsmeyer.
Buenas noches, miembros del Consejo y de la Comisión de Planificación. Muchas gracias por todo el trabajo que están haciendo. No iba a hablar porque parte de mí solo quiere dejar que ustedes continúen con el trabajo y empiecen a construir. Pero fui tan inspirada por Crystal que simplemente sentí que necesitaba hablar y solo para mencionar que, ya sabes, solía tomar grupos de interfaith en un nonprofit que trabajé en Ventura County para trabajar en el campo solo por una hora y luego para hablar y mirar la actualidad de la vivienda de los trabajadores de la granja y luego la vivienda de los trabajadores de la granja, las decentes y affordables que estábamos advocatingando. Y los padres todos hablaron de cómo cuando pudieron moverse del subestándar de la vivienda donde estaban triplicados a la vivienda de los trabajadores de la granja, los niños subieron tres niveles de grado. Así que, ya sabes, incluso a pesar de eso, tienes gente como Crystal y otros y he tenido el privilegio de leer las solicitudes de scholarship de la escuela secundaria. Es increíble, a pesar de las condiciones, lo que nuestra juventud en esta comunidad está haciendo. Pero es para nosotros verlo como un derecho para los niños y también es para nosotros ver qué tipo de comunidad y qué tipo de futuro queremos tener en la comunidad. Esto va a beneficiar a todos nosotros. Así que tan pronto y tan mucho como sea posible, realmente te animo a continuar con tu trabajo. Así que gracias.
Gracias, Alice. Y ahora vamos a Zoom para comentar público.
Gracias, el primer orador es María García.
Tal vez podamos pasar a la siguiente y María vuelva.
Emily Glies.
Sí, soy Emily Glies y soy residente senior de Half Moon Bay. Y estoy interesada en, hemos hablado de la gran necesidad de bajo ingreso y otras necesidades de vivienda para personas más jóvenes, lo cual aplaudo de forma completa todo lo que he oído. También hay una necesidad de abordar las necesidades de los seniors en Half Moon Bay, particularmente las necesidades de aquellos que aman nuestra comunidad pero quieren mudarse a casas más pequeñas que tenemos. Sé un número de personas solteras, por ejemplo, que viven en casas grandes, más grandes que necesitan, que estarían interesadas en mudarse y crear vivienda, en realidad. Y así que estoy interesada en cómo la política relaciona con la animación de más seniores de vivienda útil para los seniors, como ADUs o quizás otros complejos de apartamentos. Así que ese es mi interés en particular, es representar a los seniors.
Gracias, Emily.
El próximo orador es Sean McFetrich.
Hola, ¿me escuchas?
Sí, gracias.
Muchas gracias y gracias por organizar esta reunión. Y solo quiero agradecer a todos los involucrados, y en particular a Jill Ikus y Mike Noche por haber trabajado con nosotros aquí en el Distrito escolar en meses recientes. Parece que son seis meses, parece un tiempo largo, tal vez más largo que eso. Como verán en el último Report de Recursos de la Vivienda, Apéndice C, página C-18, este es el proyecto que hemos estado trabajando con los consejeros de Brookwood, nuestros consejeros de real estate, que también desarrollaron la vivienda del trabajo, la vivienda del distrito de trabajo para Jefferson, el Distrito escolar de la ciudad de Daly, que fue considerado primero de su clase. Por supuesto, no estamos solo hablando de la vivienda del profesor. Estamos hablando de la vivienda para algunos de nuestros empleados también, que cualificarían y necesitarían mucha ayuda, y eso podría ser los trabajadores de servicio de comida, los conductorios de autobuses, los custodios, nuestro personal clasificado. Así que solo quiero agradecer a Matthew Chittister, John Doughty, Jill Ikus, Mike Noche y a ustedes por llegar hasta aquí. Y esperamos hablar contigo en el futuro con más planes solidificados cuando sea hora de hacerlo. Muchas gracias por su trabajo en esto y por su apoyo al Distrito escolar en este sentido.
Gracias, Sean.
El próximo orador es Mike Ferreira.
Buenas noches, alcalde Penrose y miembros del Consejo y comisiones de planificación. Ha sido interesante escuchar todos los comentarios hasta ahora. Aparentemente sé cuánto todo el mundo en este Consejo ha tratado de animar especialmente la vivienda affordable. Y ha sido frustrante para muchos de ustedes que ciertos sitios nunca han materializado y tu poder, no tienes el poder para forzarlos a materializarse. Dicho esto, me acuerdo un poco con toda la análisis de sitio que se ha puesto ante ustedes. Está ahí para hacerse, todos necesitamos recordar que basado en reuniones anteriores, su RENA tiene que ser completación de vivienda, no solo permiso de vivienda. Y no sé qué poderes tienes para forzar eso tampoco, pero puedes hacer lo mejor que puedas. He mirado algunas de las cosas allí. Por supuesto, completamente estoy de acuerdo que la medida D podría alcanzar ese objetivo. Pero leí algunos cosas en El Elemento sobre cosas que se harán en el futuro, como reducir el parqueo. Y solo me gustaría ofrecer mi propia impresión de que en un área que tiene muy poco transito, eso no es una panacea. En este momento visito la vivienda senior dos veces por semana. Diría que solo una en cuatro veces puedo encontrar un espacio de parqueo para visitantes. Y aquellos de ustedes que han visitado Moon Ridge han visto cómo está la situación de parqueo en Miramonte Point Road, la overflow. Así que solo me gustaría hacer una advertencia precautaria sobre reducir los requisitos de parqueo en el futuro en términos de lo que hace a la comunidad. Gracias.
Gracias, Mike.
El próximo orador es Joanne Rokoski.
Buenas noches. Aplaudo el discurso detallado y detallado y también aplaudo el tono del documento. Era tan eloquente en describir las necesidades de más vivienda en el área y el compromiso con la vivienda de bajo ingreso y de alta ingreso. Y, y ciertamente para cada proyecto en la línea de planificación, estoy completamente en su apoyo. Me preocupo por la necesidad inmediata proyectada, por mil unidades de vivienda para los residentes de bajo ingreso y de alta ingreso en nuestra comunidad. El número proyectado, incluyendo el número de sobra, son cuatrocientos diez unidades, si calculo correctamente, durante toda la vida del ciclo para vivienda de bajo y de alta ingreso. Eso está a un par de años de distancia y eso no es ni medio de lo que se proyecta ser necesario ahora mismo. Así que mi plea es que la ciudad considere separadamente cómo se logra esta necesidad adicional. Creo que las necesidades son desesperadas y han sido habladas tan eloquente por los anteriores oradores. No intentaré repetirlas porque fueron dicho tan bien. Aplaudo a ellos por tener el coraje de estar aquí esta noche y hablar de esas necesidades. Cuando Crystal habló, y voy a abordar eso, cuando Crystal habló, piensa en eso, una chica de diez años tan eloquente describiendo su necesidad de vivienda y el impacto del espacio crowded para ella. Ella es una de las líderes futuras en nuestra comunidad y seguramente le debemos y a todos los otros niños en nuestra comunidad una oportunidad de vivienda segura, affordable y justa. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Our next speaker is phone number ending in 4452. You can press star six to unmute.
Yes, my name is Kristen Logring. I'm a resident of Cypress Cove. And I have to say, it's quite offensive as to how we're being pitted against each other. I'm an immigrant. I raised my daughters here in the U.S. as a single mother, putting them through college. In my late 40s, I was finally able, after many years of work, hard work in this country, to be able to afford my home in Cypress Cove, which is now going to be affected by a development that is being rammed down our throats without any study done at this point in time and the impact of what is going to happen to our community. So if I hear conversations and being accused of being worried about my property value that I have put my life savings in, I find that very offensive, I have to say. I do understand the need for low income housing. I do understand the plight of the people on the coast that are working in farming and other areas. The city has turned a blind eye to that for a long time. And this conversation needs to go a different way, of much more of having a community approach and really involving the residents. This is not the rich against the poor. I don't like the statements that were made earlier in terms of pitting us against each other. I'm very concerned about traffic and other impacts on our property here that we worked hard for, for many, many decades ourselves. So we need to stop this narrative of the rich against the poor, or whatever else is happening here. This is not helping the conversation, and we need to dial it back a little bit, I would say, in terms of how we interact with each other and go about understanding the impact on the community, impact on the low income community, absolutely no disagreement there. But you need to understand too, that there are a lot of hardworking people who are lower middle class, who are living in this community, who are worried about their property values because they spent their life savings on this, and who need to understand what is going to happen if the city shuts this kind of stuff down off first.
Thank you, Crystal.
Maria Avila Garcia.
Buenas tardes.
Mi nombre es Maria Angelica Avila Garcia.
So my name is Maria Angelica Avila Garcia.
Y yo solo estoy pidiendo.
And I'm just asking for.
Que se hagan los apartamentos para todas las personas que están necesitando.
To have all of these apartments built for the people in need.
Ya que muchos no podemos estar viviendo cada uno siempre, no podemos, tenemos que vivir todos juntos.
Because we can't all be living together.
Para poder pagar una renta, ya que a veces la venta son muy caras aquí en Half Moon Bay.
To be able to pay our rent, because sometimes the rents here in Half Moon Bay are very high.
Y por muchos años se ha estado pidiendo que haya más apartamentos.
So we've been asking for many years for there to be more apartments.
Para que todos los niños puedan tener un lugar donde estudiar.
So all the kids have a place to do their homework.
Y no estén siempre escuchando a los demás, que no los dejan estudiar a gusto, y están muy estresados por eso.
And not be constantly stressed out because they're hearing everybody else in the room and don't allow them to do their studies.
Que esperemos si nos pueden apoyarnos para estos proyectos que están.
We're hoping that you support us with this project. Thank you.
Gracias, Maria. I'm going to suggest a five-minute and no longer break. We will be back here starting at quarter to nine. We've got a lot of work to do. I would like to ask the planning commission to begin their discussion and their commentary. Who would like to start?
I'm okay to start, if that's.
Thank you.
So a couple of things. In terms of policy, I did see some measure of rent control through the work, I guess it's called WHO, Workforce Housing Overlay. But I didn't see policy on rent control. So that was just one comment I have. And then last night, I was here for a community input meeting, and I was really happy to see Supervisor Mueller here. He has sort of hit the ground running in Half Moon Bay and has been helping, I know, the coast side with some of our immediate housing issues. But I was wondering if there might be an opportunity to obtain more Measure K funding to help with low income housing in Half Moon Bay. I know this year, they're earmarking, I think, a million dollars in Measure K funding, and they look for a $5 million grant from the state. But I think there's maybe an opportunity either this year or next year to get more money from Measure K. And that's about it. I also wanted to say, I thought the housing element had good programs and policy in place, and future LCLUP implementation regulations would probably ensure that we could meet our housing obligations if plans should come forward. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Hey there. So I guess first of all, I was really heartened that you were able to sort of meet some of the RENA goals without including some of the big lots, some of the big PUDs, the Planned Urban Developments. Oh, okay, sorry. Is that better? Okay. So I was saying that I was, I felt like it was, that this housing element is, seems to me really strong, and I was very pleased that we were able to meet some of these RENA goals with, and not include some of those pipeline projects and some of the PUDs. So that, I was a little surprised that we were able to reach those numbers without that. So that was great. I think many people sort of see, you know, like the need is really obvious, the need is very clear. And a lot of people think that there's big resistance, both from citizens' NIMBY resistance, but also from government, from city government and the council. And I just wanted to make sure everyone understands that it's been really the opposite. And I've been really impressed by how, you know, this is an obvious goal, and this is a really good start to meet that goal. I also just wanted to make sure that you explain how we're guaranteeing that the developments that we put together for low income, lower income housing, will benefit the people who work here and live here now. Because I think that's a very important thing that people don't quite understand. So that's all I have for now.
Thank you, David. Other commissioners, Joanne.
Yes. So I had a question, well, I had 26 questions that I sent over to Jill and her team, and they were very kind to answer them to me. But I think you all received a summary of, well, not a summary, you received the questions that I put forward. So it's way too many for me to even bring up here. But I think it's worth, you know, at least some of the council looking at it and seeing if it's even something that you want to consider talking through and/or expanding on some of the programs that would benefit for additional housing. The one thing that I struck, it struck me, was the parking restrictions. And I say this only because I have senior parents, I have friends that are in my age bracket that are suffering from MS. They live, they used to live in housing, and this, granted, this is in downtown LA. They used to live in apartment complexes in downtown LA. We go down there, I'd go down there and drive there to visit him. And getting parking in areas where you can't get parking, I have to park a mile away and walk to see him, to his apartment. So it's tough for seniors, it's tough for people that are not able-bodied, and it's tough for seniors to, you know, find parking, or even their friends going to visit them. And so it discourages visitors from going and visiting the elderly. And so parking is an important thing for me when it comes to visiting the ill, visiting your family members. So that's something I hope we can have more discussion about, around the parking. The, so there are other things I think that are also noteworthy of looking into the questions, and I don't know if we'll have time in doing that. So parking was one. I don't understand the concept of what just housing means in my world that I was reading. So it would be helpful for me to understand a little bit more of what just housing means, and maybe it's helpful for the committee members as a whole to understand what just housing really means. Does it mean deeply affordable? It would be something that I would need to have explained. So I'll stop there. Thanks.
Thank you, Joanne. And Hazel, and I don't know how I can get around that. I've been calling you either Hazel or Joanne for as long as I've known you, and your name is Hazel Joanns. I apologize.
It's quite okay.
Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a few comments, based on my experience on planning commission. But I think the housing element that Jill and Mike have brought to this point is very articulate and has a wonderful vision at the heart of it that is congruent with the vision of the local coastal land use plan, which is to, for us to, as a city, exercise imagination and flexibility in downtown to meet many needs, most importantly, our affordable housing needs, while continuing to embrace the vision that Measure D has produced and the preservation of open spaces outside of downtown. So I'm all for that. I think it makes wonderful sense for the unique community that we are here in Half Moon Bay. So I would, if I were allowed to give city council and staff advice on moving this forward to ordinances and such, I would say, think about downtown and how we can be even more flexible than ever with meeting these housing needs there. You know, some of the ideas that I liked were removing governmental constraints, you know, let's think big about making the process for certain classes of housing as painless and quick as possible. And even beyond that, let's incent certain classes of housing more powerfully than we have to date. You know, the concept of deed-restricted, affordable ADUs, getting special treatment. I know from my reading that there are a number of communities in California that are exploring incentives like this. I think we should get, should be very serious about that. I think there's, I think there's some. I think there's, I think there's some good to be had. I'm gonna respectfully disagree with my peer, I'm not gonna disagree with Councilmember Joannas. I'm gonna say that parking in certain environments, such as senior centers, which former Mayor Mike Ferrara mentioned, is very important. But in general, my feeling is that in downtown, we are luckier with our housing resources than we know. And I could easily name a bunch of neighboring communities where I have an awful lot more trouble finding a place to park to visit retail establishments than here. So I would, I would be supportive of, in many cases, city ordinances that would give, in the downtown area, give more flexibility to the parking requirements and other flexible zoning requirements. I think we have to put our money where our mouth is if we're really gonna maximize the approach to affordable housing. My last point is, and I'm inspired by a couple of our speakers tonight. I think that figuring out a plan to meet the RENA number is a great start. If council has a vision that we have needs for the future above and beyond that, then let's just, let's not stop there, obviously. Let's be brave enough to have an even bigger vision beyond meeting the RENA number. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Steve. Rick.
Thank you. And I just want to say, this is an amazing document. I joined the Planning Commission during the Cycle V housing element, and this is a far step above that. I know a lot of it's driven by state policy, but I also know the city council has invested in this. And so I think it's an important thing that you guys have done. This is a great place to live, and it's a very diverse community. I think it's important in this document that we, in the very preamble, make that a priority, of protecting the diversity of the community, making sure that our housing policies tie to pedestrian and bike paths. The number-one thing people complain about, every survey, is traffic. It's not just last night's meeting, it is the number-one thing in our community. And as we think about housing, we need to think about how those circulation plans integrate. But this is, you know, last night, during last night's meeting, Ray Mueller made a point that kind of echoes what Jill was talking about earlier, is we have to establish a connection between the feedback we received and this plan, or else. And Ray Mueller laid that out very eloquently last night. The or else is, the state may come in with a very heavy-handed approach and do it their way. And so I think, I think this is, we're embracing things in a way that's very thoughtful and very creative, but we need to take ownership of this, so it belongs to Half Moon Bay, and control isn't taken out of our hands. And I think the staff has done an amazing job moving this forward. When people talk about low-income housing, it sounds scary. The median household income in San Mateo County is $126,000, Half Moon Bay is $131,000. That puts you in low-income, the charts we have here, that's low-income housing, right? I mean, that's, it's hard to afford housing here. And so I think it's important to put that in context when we talk about low-income housing. It's the median income in San Mateo County. That's what we're planning for, for a lot of these housing units. And there are a lot of people here, I think the presentation we had that was so eloquently put together, "A child shall lead them," I think is the expression. It's, it's, there are a lot of people who work really hard who are very low-income, and they support our community. The reality is, we're getting older. Our community's 47 years old, on average. California's an average of 36 years. We're continuing to get older and older, and we need to make sure that we have a diversity of housing so that people who take care of us, clean our houses, do all the things that we depend on them, can actually live here because it ties back to traffic. We don't want people having to drive from some other part of the county just to take care of us. And you made that same point last night, Joaquin. I think that the other thing is, the reality is, we have, depending if you use A-Bags numbers or the census numbers in this document, we have between 200 and 400 households who are severely impacted. They're really crowded. And the reality is, regardless of what we have with Measure D, we have a population that's remained stagnant. We have a lot of people who are getting crammed and crammed into more house, in the small house, and there's lots of people there. There's also a lot of people who, you know, they live in a large house, and it's one or two, and their kids have gone away. But we have a real impact of people who live here today, who take care of us today. And there are friends and neighbors, we play soccer with them, we play, you know, volleyball, all kinds of things. And I think we really need to take care of folks. So I think it's important that we strike the right balance in this, and, you know, we think about, how do we get a diversity of people intermingled? Because that's what's great, but as we think about big projects like 50 mobile homes, or we think about 80 units here or 40 units here, it's important to think about how we integrate this housing in, and it's balanced in the right way so that people don't feel like they're losing something special about their neighborhood. I think it's a legitimate concern that people have, is, hey, it's scary to feel like your neighborhood's changing and it's out of your control. I think we need to just find the right balance there. And the last thing I'll just mention is, I don't think we necessarily need to address this in the housing element. But as a city council and as a city, we need to do something about how ADUs are consuming all of the Measure D allocations. Unless we do something, there will be no housing, no single-family homes, no multi-story homes, unless the city owns the property and builds it and prioritizes it. We really need to find a way to address this. And I think, you know, again, I don't think it needs to happen in the housing element, but I do think it's important. I agree with the comments that both of you made about parking. I think it is an important thing. I think there are areas where we can reduce parking restrictions. Parking has been used to block meaningful development in many ways, and I think there are opportunities to make it flexible. Okay, I do have one last point. If we're, all the work we've done for the Local Coastal Land Use Plan that we just got updated by the California Coastal Commission, you know, all of this really focuses on making our community more livable. And the big emphasis, from a policy perspective, is focusing development in the town center. And I think one of the other things we have an opportunity to do here is look at what the definition of the town center is. Because I think one of our council members ended up helping to create the definition of town center many years ago through a ballot proposition. I think we need to take a look at what that definition means, because I think that allows us to take these policies, to make more sustainable housing, to make a more livable community. Because there's a lot of opportunity here. And, you know, this is, this is super exciting to see how close we are to getting there. I just, I think there's a couple of little things that need to be done, but the definition of town center is another thing that we really need to take a close look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anyone else from Planning? All right, let's move on to City Council, and we can have a back-and-forth going on. If anybody from Planning wants to muscle in, has something to say, please do. So, who would like to go first? Harvey.
To Margaret's point, I think that immediately, if we work on rent control, that will make a big difference in the housing situation in our community. It's not part of the housing element, it's really not part of the agenda tonight. I have brought it up, it's, when the council sets its priorities in a month or so, I hope that we will consider that. So, that's something that's immediate and can actually impact people who need to rent in our town. Anybody who has listened to the community the last two or three years talk about the need for affordable housing, it's just overwhelming. And to think that any of the city council people here are not concerned about it is just, it's just not true. We all do care, as Mike Ferrara said. It's just hard. It's really, really hard. If it weren't, I think this council would have actually done something a long time ago. So, we need to prioritize. I agree that the downtown center is the, is the place to build the majority of the new affordable housing. I'm not concerned about the lack of single-family housing. I am concerned about the lack of affordable housing. This housing element goes a long way toward incorporating the vision that we have for diversity, for supporting the workers who actually do the majority of the heavy lifting in our community. And we need to do everything possible that we can to support them. This document lists a bunch of potential sites for affordable housing. I'm gonna just pick one out of them, because it's been a hobby horse of mine for 10 years now. And that is, the Our Lady of the Pillar has an incredibly good site. It's flat, it's large, it's located right near the services that people need without having extra parking. And it's just the will of, frankly, the, that community, the parishioners there, that is keeping that from being developed, because sitting there vacant as a parking lot is a travesty at this point. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. Joaquin.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say, thank you, Jill and Mike. You know, it's, I know it's a lot of work, and I'm gonna have to apologize, you know, because we have pushed you, you know, beyond the limits, and we have given you a lot of work, and we have done it because we know you care. You know, that's one thing, you know, one of our first meetings with Jill, you know, I realized how much she cares about our community and about being able to build affordable housing for the community. And it shows. You know, it shows we have this great, you know, housing element in front of us, you know, that pretty much great detail of how we're gonna be able to reach, you know, our goal. And I know you've heard the number, 1,000 units, you know, but that's actually, you know, we need to get there. You know, because we have a lot of community members that are actually crowded. One of the things that was brought up today is about, you know, from Cristal, she talked about, you know, her education. We see, there was a, an article that was done a couple of years ago, I believe it was 2021, about our students, high school students, and about the grade level. Their grade point average was pretty low. We were actually to check, you know, those grades to the student, and where they live, and how they live. I'm sure we will find something. It is difficult to do your homework in a crowded room. You have no space to do your work. You have no access to Wi-Fi. To be able to go to the library is difficult with the transportation, different times during the day. But, you know, we are moving forward, you know, I can see that happening. I mean, we have, you know, I forgot the comment that it was how, you know, we are being led by a child, pretty much, you know, Cristal, a young leader. You know, that we have to recognize, if she can see that, we should be able to see that, I understand that, about the need of the housing for we have in our community. There's several locations that we have looked at. You know, we talk about be sustainable, smart development. What is this, what this is doing, we have, we are creating leaders in our community. We have, I'm just gonna recognize Cristal, her mom, Rocío, Carolina, Mari Vega, and many other people that came together, you know, marching for more than a year already, you know, asking for just housing. That means affordable housing, based on their income. Something that would justify, you know, to be able to pay the rents according to their income. Poverty level in San Mateo County is $120,000, you know, a family of four. We have, with the permission of Rocío, I'm gonna say how much money actually they make in a family of five. Less than $40,000 a year, a family of five. So they are way below poverty level. And that's just one of the families that we are talking about. We have several families living with that type of income. So how can they afford the rents that we are not paying Half Moon Bay? I am very honored, actually, I'm very honored to be part of this group, the council members, Mayor Penrose, city staff. Because this is a group that cares. The same thing with, you know, with the Planning Commission. The concerns that we have about our community, about our neighbors. Parking is a big deal. She had a meeting with, you know, with somebody from our Downtown Association, the businesses, they need parking. She mentioned, "Joaquin, can you build a parking structure? Is it possible to build a parking structure downtown Half Moon Bay for parking?" I said, "I don't know." But it's something we can definitely, you know, look into. At least five businesses on Main Street are struggling. Just think about it. We have a very, a business owner in the community. Ninety, I think, I think he told me, 95% of his employees are Latinos, and most of them are, you know, pretty much low-income. If they were to move out of Half Moon Bay, he would be out of business. A lot of our restaurants, you know, they make $20 or less, about $20. If they're not able to have housing, those restaurants are gonna go out of business. You know, two years ago, I asked our city staff to try to figure out, you know, about how much income is actually generated with the support of the low-income community from our local businesses. I don't know if you heard the report from one of our local news reporters. 2021 to 20, 2018 to 2021, San Mateo County actually lost almost $50 million in farming. That's a lot of money, $50 million in just three years. So imagine the next two years, our essential workers or farm workers move out of the area. Think about the restaurants, the hotels, or local markets, or schools. So it is on our best interest to actually build. And it's not news. And I know that the city is doing a lot of work to make sure this happens. And just remind you that the Coastal Commission was in Half Moon Bay a month and a half ago, and they said they have never opposed a low-income development. I have it recorded, if you want to hear it. So we heard that, it's recorded. So we know that it's an opportunity for us, that the Coastal Commission, they want to work with us. So just keep that in mind. And we have beautiful sites to develop, all downtown, walking right to work and to school. And we have beautiful sites to develop, all downtown, walking right to work and to school. Thank you.
Other council members. Debbie?
Thank you Jill and Mike for really a brilliant document. The care and loving kindness that goes into it is really astonishing. It's an immense amount of work. I don't know if you understand exactly how many hours and how many years have gone into gathering the data and, you know, agreeing on the vision for the community in general, but also housing. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of blessed work. And I believe that housing is a right. And I think this document sets the table. I think we've, we've come a long way. Affordability, you know, is the pillar. We have a land use plan and a coastal commission that will support us. We have a community in many respects that support us. There are holdouts, but I think we've set the table and now we have to find a way, you know, to implement. And as Harvey said, it is hard, it is expensive, it requires multiple players to come to the table, multiple funding sources, including, you know, rent subsidies in some cases. So it's very complex, but we have set the table. And with this document and with our zoning implementation, that's the next step, we're gonna start, you know, being able to deliver. I'd like to just comment on some of the things that Planning Commissioner said. I agree with Margaret, I think we need to keep an eye on Measure K funding, for sure. Every year, there's, there seems to be more of it, but we want our share. Part of the problem is we need, you know, shovel-ready projects to really compete well. So, but we need to keep our eye on that. As for rent control, I think the council has already agreed to look at that, but, you know, at the most, it's going to keep rents where they are now rather than rollbacks. So I'm not sure how much that's going to help us, but the council has already prioritized taking a look at that in the coming year. Parking restrictions, I understand what Hazel and Mike Ferrera were saying about being careful where we have flexible parking because we do want, you know, to, you know, encourage visitation, connection, that sort of thing. On the other hand, I agree that there are opportunities downtown where if we don't reduce some of the requirements, you know, we're not going to get projects. We've already seen that. So I think parking is an area, it's very expensive. I've asked for data on what an individual parking space costs. I know that about 20 years ago, it was like $9,000. I'm assuming it's a lot more expensive now. So, you know, parking is something that we need a little nuance about maybe, but we can't take it off the table. So I definitely agree with that. And I agree with Steve Rudek about flexibility downtown in general. You know, if we want a vibrant, balanced, commercial and housing area, you know, we're gonna have to have some flexibility. And we're going to have to go beyond our conventional notions of what a house is, what a business district is, and think bigger. And think about new arrangements, you know? Families are different now. People shop differently now. So we can't rely on, you know, tried and true planning policies from planning school of, you know, 50 years ago, 40 years ago, 30 years ago. We need to, you know, think innovatively. I think that's really, really important. I agree about, I think Rick's point about taking ownership for our policymaking and our zoning is super important because every year, the state takes over more and more control, and it's hungry for control. And, you know, so we have to, there are gonna be areas where we have to give a little bit to maintain control over our quality of life, which needs to be a balanced quality of life. So again, we can't do business as usual because the framework, the larger framework that we live in and do business in is changing, both the state and the federal level. And I agree with Rick. So ADUs, I'm guessing that that's how we deal with it, is not maybe pertinent for the housing element, but I think we have to take another look at how we treat ADUs in terms of Measure D. There's a lot of demand for it, and the demand for it makes it more difficult for us to do multi-unit projects for affordable housing, like downtown. So this idea that bigger projects can phase, I think, given the cost of housing and construction just doesn't make any sense anymore. Phasing is really tough, and people need certainty, they want to know what they're gonna be doing, they have to go to the bank and get money. So I think this idea that, you know, bigger projects can just piece together Measure Ds over several years is highly questionable. So I think we need to look at potentially maybe measure, maybe ADUs are a fraction of a Measure D, or we look at some other flexible mechanism to soak up that excess demand. You know, people are wanting, you know, ADUs for their mother-in-laws and their parents and children who are living at home. Maybe there's a couple, a childless couple, lower income that can't afford, you know, rent or a house. I just think ADUs are something that we can do relatively quickly, the process is streamlined both locally and as required by the state. So I think we need to take a look at how we're handling ADUs and Measure D. And, you know, if we were to have a little more flexibility with ADUs, then maybe a 60-unit affordable housing project doesn't have to worry about phasing over two, three, four years. You know, we might even look at the breakdown between what we're looking for downtown and what we're allowing outside of downtown. Maybe that balance needs to be changed. Measure D has been, Measures A and D have been great for our community. It forestalled some really bad development, development that would have, you know, crushed our community character. But, you know, times change and we have to be able to look at things, you know, people will get upset, you know, to even have that discussion, but I think we need to have that discussion. And I don't know if it's part of here or something we do subsequently, but I think we need to have that discussion in order for things to get built in a timely manner that we need, and we need the affordable housing. I do want to say that I think the vision of more affordable housing downtown is really good, but I don't think we should ignore mixed income developments either, because I think it's good to have people of different incomes and backgrounds living in the same place and not just in segregated little, you know, neighborhoods, little developments. So I don't want us to ignore the possibility for a development that has market rate units and below-market rate units. And there's, people are calling it like social housing, they're doing it up in, like in Marin and Sonoma where they're, and I think in Alameda, where they're reserving big chunks of units for below-market rate at various levels too. So, you know, we have to be creative there, I think, to establish a working balance in an integrated, diverse community. So there's basically one area of the housing element that I really wanted us to be more robust with, a little more ambitious with, and that's home sharing and cooperative, what you're calling home sharing and cooperative housing. I don't think hip housing is enough, running out, you know, having a bedroom share, whatever. I've had an opportunity to talk to housing experts, you know, going to various conferences and city managers and things. And when I've asked them, what do you think the future of housing is? And without an exception, everybody said shared housing. Land is too precious, housing is too expensive, we need to find innovative ways to share homes. We already have lower-income people, our essential workers, sharing it in, you know, not-so-nice conditions, but they're home sharing. Can we make those situations better by looking at permitting and incentives and that sort of thing? I'm very big right now on cohousing. I'm gonna be attending an Antioch University course over June about cohousing. I think we need to call that out in our document, and I think we need to, you know, cohousing is kind of a different animal, and I think we need zoning and treatments that are a little bit different just from, you know, sharing a bedroom and things like that. I think there are people who would like to live in intentional communities, you know, there are people who like live in sustainable communities or, you know, eco-villages where they have a, you know, a big house of people who are like-minded and they want to live together. You know, maybe there are seniors who aren't ready to go into senior housing or can't afford even to maybe downsize, maybe, you know, a golden girl sort of thing, let's have some cohousing. Single mothers with children, multi-generational, but I think, I think cohousing deserves more and more attention, and I'd like us to be more ambitious about it. And, you know, you call out, you know, larger homes to allow home sharing, I think that's great. One concern I had was I noticed that when you're talking about comparing like residential home sharing with like transitional housing and residential care housing, transitional residential care can be in all zoning designations, but, you know, residential home sharing cannot be. So I think we need to, you know, why would we treat just simple home sharing differently from transitional housing and like, what I'm guessing you're calling residential care is like for disabled or seniors or something like, like a board and care? So I think we want to, you know, look at those distinctions we seem to be making and ask why we're making them, because I think, I think people want to, want to live together, and we need to figure out a way to help that. Maybe it's making it easier to remodel kitchens for shared housing or add a bathroom or add a bedroom. But I think this is an area where, you know, we have existing housing stock in existing neighborhoods, how can we make it work for home sharing, more than just, you know, hip housing and ADUs? Again, we seem to be treating increasing density as more like separate units, like duplex or triplex, but why not people living together in a house, shared housing, and doing it right and doing it well? So that's the area where I would like to see us work harder. Other than that, I think it's a, I think it's a great document, it's comprehensive, you've crossed your Ts and dotted your Is. I think the community should be, should be very proud. And I'm not content tooting our horn about what we're doing, you know, to try to do affordable housing because we still have to deliver. But I agree that we all care and that we're very, working very hard to create the framework that will allow it to happen. And I know you're impatient and you should be. And you're, you're doing the right thing by showing up here and pushing and pushing and pushing. And, but it will be a process, and we need to set expectations, you know, appropriately for that. But know that we're, we're in it with you and we're working hard. And, you know, pledge to deliver. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Debbie. Robert?
So just a couple of overarching philosophical points. You know, we keep, what's always come up when we do planning in our city is we talk about, and all the outreach, when we did our LCP, and it comes up, you know, what's the character of the, what do we want in terms of the character of Half Moon Bay? So it also always comes up is, well, we really like the small-town character, right? Whatever the heck that means to each person could be really different, but that always comes up, we like the small town. Okay, well, you know, what do we mean by character? You know, what do, what do small towns do around the country? And, you know, very often, small towns are known for taking care of each other, having each other's back. And I think, when we think of our own personal character, we want it to line up, who do we want to be? You know, they often say, good character is what you do when nobody else is looking. It's a pretty high, good standard. So even if folks aren't looking at us, who are we? Who do we want to be? And I always trust people's intentions. I think we're a town that wants to feel that we take care of those who can't always fend for themselves or don't have political power. And there's always those in any community who have more situational advantage than others. And as allies, how do we reach out and lend a helping hand to folks who need it? And that's, to me, what character is about of a town. How do we help folks? How long can we sit and listen to what the kind of conditions people live under? The things that we found out about how some folks were living on some farms? It was shameful. There's people who knew that was going on. There were agencies that knew. Well, I won't get into the detail, but, you know, shame on us for tolerating those kind of excuses. And, but here we are. And now we have a very thorough roadmap. I spent all weekend looking through these 300 pages here, there's a lot here. And luckily, I was by myself this weekend, so I had plenty of time just to keep coming, get through this thing. And, you know, I think about Jill. When I first came on to the council, I was talking to someone, we're talking about housing, and your name came up. I said, oh, you know, what's Jill like? I was new. And this person said, oh God, Jill, Jill cares about his housing, you know, affordable housing, that's it. Well, Jill's been responsible for getting a lot of incredible documents through the coastal commission, this kind of document, she cares about a lot. But yeah, thank God, she cares about affordable housing. And so in terms of some of the things I think we can do, you know, if we pay attention, we could connect dots. So you know, I'm hearing about, Rick brought up, you know, housing in our town center, and how do we have more housing there? And, but you know, the city doesn't own a lot of the homes in the town center. So you know, we have 55 Kelly, we have Stone Town. But there were some really interesting, that woman, I think it was Emily Glines, she said, you know, she knows all these folks, seniors with big houses. They love to sell those houses and live in something scaled down. So, well, that's an interesting dot. Who the heck are these folks? Let's call Emily and bring those folks together and say like, are there really quite a few of you? And we know there's some AD, so let's put ADUs to great use. She said some would love to live in an ADU. Fantastic. Let's help some of those folks sell their homes, have an ADU, and then all of a sudden we might have some homes downtown in that central area that we could use. Maybe bring the credit unions into play of how we can find, you know, build some reasonably priced housing for those folks, because a builder will come in and do that, you know, people have their construction loans. I mean, we could get creative. But there's something even more critical that Rick brought up. He brought up what Ray Mueller said. And, you know, we got to think of all the realities. I hate to use fear to get people to do something, but sometimes that works politically. If we don't do something, the state will come in. And there's something, what's it called, something like the Builder's Choice, you know, legislative, Builder's Remedy. So the Builder's Remedy, under state law allows, you know, if a builder, pretty soon, and it'll hit the courts, but can come into a community, and if they got a plan to build, the state is gonna protect them. And if they got a plan to build, the state is going to protect them from any other restrictive laws to build what they want. Maybe build, you know, something eight stories high wherever they want. I mean, there's cases all over the Bay Area happening now where that can happen. And I've been following it. And I've been, I always like to follow, you know, where's the, where's the enforcement? And I just read a recent article that the group in state government that would enforce those laws, boy, they are staffing up. So now you got this remedy there and you're going to have, you know, power behind it. So we could either act or wait till a ambitious builder comes in and does it, and does it for us. So it's good to keep in the back of our minds that, yeah, we have some, some time, but let's not waste it. Some stuff around the parking. In terms of downtown, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Paso Robles, right? A few hours south of here and some wine country down there. And I really never spent any time there, but about a month ago, spent a bit of time. And wow, they have this very touristy downtown area. And there's, you know, those parking meters, right? And you get the first hour free and you get up to two hours. It, it keeps a constant movement of the cars downtown. So, yeah, for people who are working downtown, they might have to walk a few more blocks or get there early in the morning. But in terms of creating movement for the businesses down there, and I've seen that in a few cities, right? You know, there's those meters you pay at the end of the blocks. So, and I don't think we'd have, we would have Coastal Commission issues with that. It's not overnight parking. It's commercial parking and it's not prohibitive. It gives folks, it's very cheap, you know, it's very reasonable, but you got to kind of keep things moving. And I've seen that in a lot of areas. So that might be one way of handling some of that parking concerns downtown. some of the other housing solutions, yeah, there, there, we are moving on what we can. We're moving on 55 Kelly. We're looking at Stone Pine. I realize there's some opposition to that. And I know last night, I wasn't there. Sorry I couldn't be there last night. But, yeah, you know, we're going to make that happen. And we're building 555 Kelly and we're starting to build momentum. There's always going to be this interesting balance between, you know, when we get someone like Mercy Housing coming in and other nonprofit builders, it's a lot easier when they want to invest in a project like that. Otherwise, a builder will come in and want to build, you know, a couple of hundred units and just provide a small amount for low-income housing. And that model always bugs me. It doesn't feel like what our character is about, like, oh, yeah, I got to build 160 units. It, you know, so most of those units will never be affordable for anybody except for a few. So the more I think we can work cooperatively with Mid Penn, Mercy Housing, and they're the ones who've built most of the best low-income housing in this city, you know, better than any housing. I mean, it's last, it lasts, it's well-built. It's been most of the senior housing that we have. It's Moon Ridge, it's Main Street Housing. So I think the more we can work with those groups and be the place to come to build more of that housing will be great. And, whoops. And last but not least, yeah, I really like that we have some political activists in this city of all ages. And when we need to hit the streets and we've got some ideas, then we will come calling and ask for your help. Because when people are hopeless and the courts don't help them and nobody else, you know, I grew up in the 60s, that's when we took it to the streets, you know? So I'm all for that collective action. We just have to be strategic. And so it's great. I'm really happy. I'm really optimistic. And let's take care of each other because that's our character. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not going to belabor and go over what everybody else has said tonight. I, I pretty much agree with what the planning commissioners have brought up and, and the council has said. So it's late and I want to make just a couple of small comments. One is, I like the idea of working on the ADUs and removing some of the restrictions around them and around our Measure D allocations and working on that. I think that deed restriction might be, we've talked about it before, but I think it might be one approach to, to use to help us to guarantee that some of these ADUs will remain low-income and affordable. I also like the, very much like the idea of mixed income housing. I think the problem that I have with that is I don't see developers who are willing to look at it. I think it's something we definitely ought to look into and see, is there somebody who does mixed income housing that, you know, that we could try to attract here? The other thing I wanted to say was about the parking. I, I have a, a lot of trouble with the long trucks that take up the street space. And I, I don't see why we can't just ban that, but why we can't just say shorter trucks only on, in downtown Half Moon Bay, period. It's crazy. It's, it's dangerous. Well, yeah, park on Johnston, park on San Benito. There are lots of places they can park. And the other thing I think that we are lacking in and we could consider doing something about is more handicap parking in our downtown. I think we talk about how difficult it is for the elderly to get around and for the handicapped. Well, if there are spaces, it makes it a lot easier. So those are two thoughts that I had. And then the last thing I want to say is, when we are talking about building low-income housing and extremely low-income housing, let us not forget to use the word beautiful low-income and extremely low-income housing. We want our town to remain beautiful, to become more beautiful. And nobody wants to see an RV park at Stone Pine. We want beautiful, low-income housing in Stone Pine, that everybody in town will say, oh, my gosh, what a lovely community this is. And not know from looking at it that these are restricted to low-income. That's what we need to aim for. We need to be proud of it. So thank you, everybody. I'm going to, I'm going to say it's time now for Planning Commission to come back if they've got something else they want to add.
Yes, if I could just offer a couple of things, and this goes to your comments, Debbie, to be very creative. Oh, is it, it's, okay, to be very creative. Couple of the comments that I, I, my comments were in question form because I just wanted to see if it could be considered as part of the element as far as programs is concerned. And then one of them was Program 1-5, which was the accessory dwelling units. Could Section 8 be applicable to the accessory dwelling units? And is that something that council would want to, want to think through and maybe include in this? And then there is also a lot of out-of-town owners, maybe out of state, out of, you know, this town that have homes. And reaching out to them if, if we can to see if they would like to participate in Section 8 housing or maybe offer them incentives for absentee owners to have an opportunity for Section 8 housing. That would be something that we could look into, or I should say, council could look into. And the other thing is fractional ownership of homes could be something else that we could look into as a town.
Sort of like tenancy in common kind of a thing?
It's more like I, a, a structure could go in and let's just say, I own six months and you can own six months, or I own three months of the year. It's almost like what you were talking about, co-sharing, but a different perspective of that. The other part that I was thinking about with SB 9, splitting lots in residential neighborhoods, if this is something that this council is really looking towards, pushing forward with, you know, creative housing, splitting lots, splitting existing lots. So if we want to go big, think big. And so these are things that will definitely maybe perhaps change the character feel of this community, but that is something that the city council would need to bring forward if that's what they want. You mentioned diverse types of housing and, you know, that was one of my questions. It's Program 1.7, diverse type of housing. And the way it's worded is living environments, different living environments. So I think that should be better defined and I, I think I put this in here, is this similar to communal living spaces such as cohousing communities, dormitory-style housing, facilities typical of nursing facilities where it's cohousing? You're in a, a nursing care facility, it's a cohousing facility. A fraternity sorority house, that's exactly what happened on college campuses. So I'm having flashbacks of college days and the, you know, 1960s. I was still young then, by the way. But, and, you know, these are things that are coming back and these are things that may have worked then, maybe it's time for it to relook at it now. And the other part is the, I think it's, we're saying it's rent stabilization for mobile home parks, right? We're limiting it to just mobile home parks. It could go to other aspects as well. And I don't know how we would go about learning about that. I understand what you're saying. Yes, things will be capped now, it's still high. But there's an opportunity for state rent stabilization. The other part that I wanted to bring up is the just housing definition. You provided a definition for just housing and, Mr. Jimenez, and I think that needs to be defined in our element because it's not defined, it's unclear. We also use the terms unhoused, unsheltered, homeless. Stick with one definition, in my opinion, so that everybody understands what that means. Because I think it's used interchangeably way too often and it can be mixed up in, when we come into other aspects of trying to define what this community needs. So anyway, I have many. I'm sorry, I just wanted to bust Lynn, you asked, so thank you.
No, I'm grateful for the additions. Thanks.
Through the mayor, may I?
Of course.
One more comment, I'll keep it short. A friend sent me a podcast about Seaside, Florida that has a really innovative parking program to allow their visitors to come in and to efficiently manage parking. And they do implement paid parking, but during a certain period of the year when a lot of the visitors come in. So I just wanted, I know that you guys engage tool design to help with the streetscape, excuse me, program. So they might benefit from looking at the Seaside Implementation Parking Plan for their community. They're a coastal community that experiences a lot of visitors coming in to enjoy their beautiful town. So I think we're in that same category and we want to, it's Seaside, Florida?
Rick.
I echo a lot of the creative ideas that Commissioner Joanna brought up around Program 1.5. I'll also go back to my original point, which is Program 1.5 called, program, I support a lot of the comments that Commissioner Joanna made about Program 1.5. I think we can be a little more creative there. The policy specifically calls out for creating 112 unit, 112 ADUs over the period of this, which again, would divert from either a single-family home, a duplex, or a triplex. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about that particular program. The other thing that's worth looking at, sometimes the most sustainable development is no development, but a change in policy. If you look at A28 in this document, one of the areas where, I think if people who are working here feel like it's impossible to rent an apartment in Half Moon Bay, it's true. It's right here on A28. The rental housing market in Half Moon Bay has collapsed. And like the rest of the Bay Area has actually increased their rental stock and we've gone in the completely opposite direction. So I think the other thing that you look at is 12%, I feel like I'm getting this number wrong, 9% of our housing stock is vacant, which is four times the rate of the rest of the Bay Area. I think, you know, there's a hun, there's at least, you know, 480 vacant lots, 120 to my layperson's eye say, we could probably look at tax policy or other rules to encourage people to rent out those units. So that's, I think there's a tremendous opportunity there just by policy changes from the city council that could get housing stock on right away.
Yeah, we did do a survey to see what folks thought about it. And I think we ought to revisit it. But the survey said people do not care about vacant lots and vacant houses.
Actually, it's 264 vacant homes. And that's from the census that we did a couple of years ago.
I actually think that might be a fertile ground for state legislation, you know? The, the second home problem is, is everywhere and the state hasn't done a darn thing about it. And I'm guessing part of the reason is our tax structure, you know? We fund our state from taxes on the 1% who have a lot of second homes and third homes and fourth homes. But I think it's worth talking to our legislators about the potential, you know, we, we have to deal with empty homes. They're sitting there unoccupied. So it seems like to me like it's kind of hypocritical to not deal with that situation.
Yeah, and I think it's extremely difficult to find the owners of those empty homes. I don't think that's an easy thing. So I think it has to be, you know, it can't be a cooperative thing. We can't induce them with, you know, Section 8. We, we've got to make it state law.
I was just wondering if there's other things other than state law? Is there any incentive such as reduction in their property taxes? I mean, there's other ways to do this if we really want to do this.
Well, there, there is a vacant house tax. You could just do that, but that's something we've looked at, we have to look at it again.
Yeah, I noticed it's completely absent from the housing element, this idea of empty second homes. Maybe we need to call it out someplace.
Through the, through the mayor, we wanted to respond a little bit to a few of these things, just so the context is, from what we were working on is understood in the room. We, we did not include the empty house tax here. We were very curious to see if it might come back up tonight. The local coastal land use plan opened the door to it and still has a policy that looks, looks open-minded about it going forward. We'd be happy to put it back in. One of the reasons why we didn't do it is because you, you moved off of it for a while, but that doesn't mean you're going to stay, stay away from it. But the other reason is because we got frankly, one of the most conservative STR ordinances ever approved by the Coastal Commission, which we do believe will, will help with this issue. It doesn't solve everything. I am a little concerned about hearing about a I am a little concerned about hearing about a shared ownership concept that is oriented towards time, because that is a way to get around STR regulations as opposed to shared ownership from the perspective of cohousing. So those are different things that we've, we've heard tonight, and we're thinking about how to weave them in. We definitely have room in that ADU policy or program to focus on or add in a Section 8 reference. We also have a few other ideas about incentives that might be available. I think the biggest challenge with incentives for ADUs is that the city just doesn't have enough money to do some of the, the really effective funding approaches to them. But if the county does, maybe, maybe we can go there. But there's, I, I think the city manager's idea was, what if we provided ADUs to residents who would live in their ADU and then rent out their house at an affordable level? It's a great idea, but we can't afford to buy everybody's ADUs. So we have to look at funding for those kinds of creative ideas. But it's a, it's a, it's a great one, and I think I've seen that in another community's housing element. Anyway, those are a few of the things we've heard tonight. We've also heard a lot about upping the game on cohousing. It's poked on in multiple programs, and I think what we may do is pull that together into a separate program and then enhance it based on comments that we've heard.
I have a question, while we're on this topic. I, I heard, I think it was Mike who referred to, what I'm guessing must be a, an HCD metric, is that they're counting units with separate kitchens. Like their, their, their metric is, it has to be a unit with a, with a kitchen, as opposed to how many people are actually in shelter. It seems to me that that's...
It's, it's a real challenge, it's why we couldn't count coast house. We were allowed to show it in the annual progress report as units that do not count towards RENA. It's something that hip housing is working on. They would like to be able to have their home share count as having housed another party, and we can't count...
Yeah, it seems to make sense, you wanna house people.
We can't count any of them, no. So it's, it's really interesting. It's, it's again, why RENA isn't everything.
Yeah, well, you know, just because you're not building something doesn't mean that you're not housing people.
Exactly.
The goal should be housing people.
Yep.
You know, in a variety of different ways. So maybe that's a subject for legislation too, but it seems to me that's a little short-sighted, but...
Jill, was there anything in the housing element about preserving our current housing? And I, I thought, I thought I saw something that...
Absolutely. Goal two is focused on housing stock preservation, especially affordable housing stock. And there are multiple programs that go to support that. Fortunately, most of the city's affordable housing stock is owned and managed by nonprofit affordable housing developers. So that, that is very protective. But as we're implementing the below-market-rate ordinance, and you're going to have some units as part of market-rate development in, in kind of a hint at a mixed-income concept. In those cases, we might not have such experienced and committed owners. And so we, we really do need to track what's going on with those units. Do you have more on that? You good? Okay.
Just one thing to add. There was a question that I think has come up repeatedly is, how do we guarantee people who live here are able to move into the affordable housing that is built? There are some cities, this is something that Program 1-3, the below-market-rate housing ordinance and essentially the city's guidelines for how the, those affordable units come online. Some cities do have preferences. There is a balance, and we would work with our city attorney's office before bringing anything before council. But if council directed for us to look at preferences and so forth, there could be an avenue to explore. I won't go into too much detail there, because I don't wanna provide any inaccurate information, but that's something to be explored, as I know other communities do have similar aspects to their BMR guidelines and such.
Yeah, I think that would be great. Any, any other comments?
I just wanna say, Jen Hansen brought up, you know, the beauty and importance of, you know, manufactured home, mobile home communities. And I think we definitely wanna support them and, and do more of them. I think they're, they're great. It's a sort of, you know, low-hanging fruit to get affordable housing, so... Hadn't heard it much mentioned up here, I just wanted to get it on the table.
Okay. I don't see anybody with hands raised or looking like they've got a comment or a question. Bring it back to staff to close us down. But before, before I do that, I just wanna say again, thank you, Jill. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Matthew, for hiring and, and being in charge of such wonderful folks. Thank you, Catherine, for all that you give us. And God bless the Planning Commission for doing such a great job. And let's do this soon, okay? And also thank Jessica, what a sweetheart. And Clerk of the Year for Public Relations, was it? Yeah.
So mayor, we're, we're trying to get our slide back up. We're quite clear in your direction. Excellent. And we're hoping for just a confirming motion of you directing us to incorporate the input that we've received from you tonight on the topics that we've just come back with. And we'll do our best to capture that and put that into the document that will go off to HCD. It won't be your last chance with this. If we don't get it exactly perfectly right, you'll get it, it'll come back, and we can make sure that we polish it up.
Great, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move that staff please incorporate all the feedback and fantastic ideas and goodwill tonight into the housing element. Get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any abstained? Any objections? Motion passes.
All righty.
This meeting is adjourned, and thank you all. Thank you all from the audience for being so patient and staying so long.